Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees Regular Meeting of Thursday, May 16, 2024. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk Soul, please call the roll.
President Pollak.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Koss.
Here.
Trustee Gallegos.
Here.
Trustee Marshazga.
Here.
Trustee Clarity.
Here.
Trustee Mateo.
We have quorum. President's report. I have a number of items to address this evening, beginning with the appointment and reappointment of board and commission chairpersons. I am recommending the following individuals be reappointed chairpersons to their respective board or commission for a one-year term. I would note that all chairs serve one-year terms and they come up for reappointment annually. And the following are reappointments, people who have served this village and will continue to serve in their capacity as chairs. Larry Forsberg from our Economic Development Commission, Richard Julian from Historical Commission, Jennifer Henigan, our Planning and Zoning Commission, Charlie Pipel, Preservation Commission, and John McLennan, Parks and Recreation Board. Additionally, I am recommending the appointment of the following individuals to be the chairperson of their respective commission for a term of one year. These are people replacing the others who are on chair, were formerly chairing the committee. One is David Brubin on the Landscape Advisory Commission and Karina Koitschus, Riverside TV Commission. I'd like to ask for a motion and second to approve these appointments.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
A motion by Trustee Gallegos, second by Trustee Marshazga. Clerk Soul, please call the roll.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Koss.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Thank you to those people who served this village as volunteers, very important to the functioning of our village. Motion is approved. Next, for President's report of motion, consideration of reappointment of village board and commission members. Again, these are people who have served on our committees and boards and have agreed to re-op and continue their service. I'm recommending the reappointment of the following individuals. Patrick Lang, Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, Kelly Navarro, Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, Greg Brilet, Ethics Commission, Susan Connor, Ethics Commission, David Tarverdi, Landscape Advisory Commission, David Barker, Landscape Advisory Commission, Gina Fury, Historical Commission, Gary Zalini, Riverside TV Commission, Eric Sunstrom, Riverside TV Commission, Charlie Pipel, Preservation Commission, Gint Lutavinkas, Preservation Commission, Thomas Walsh, Preservation Commission, and Eric Pelton, Economic Development Commission. I'd like to ask for a motion and second for these appointments.
So moved. Seconded.
Motion by Trustee Marshazga, second by Trustee Gallegos. Mix it up a little bit. Clerk Soul, please call the roll.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Koss.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Again, thank you to all those who are continuing their service to the village as volunteers. As we approach the conclusion of this current term of our volunteers, on behalf of myself and the Village Board of Trustees, I want to extend our deepest gratitude to all the board and commission members who will not be renewing their terms, who have served the village and have, for various reasons, moving on to other activities and opportunities. We are grateful for the time, energy, and expertise they have contributed to the village during their tenure. The following list of board and commission members will be retiring effective June 1st. Amador Valenzuela from our Economic Development Commission, Bridget Doherty from the Economic Development Commission, Jennifer Dvorak, Parks and Recreation Board, Sean O'Brien, Parks and Recreation Board, Alex Lang, Planning and Zoning Commission, Kapil Khanna, Preservation Commission, Matthew Seymour, Preservation Commission, Georgine Polis, Police Pension Board, and Colin Hughes, Riverside TV Commission. Again, thank you to those volunteers are lifeblood of our village. We depend on them in so many ways. So that concludes appointments and reappointments. I will note that we will have new appointments at our next agenda and we'll welcome in a number of new volunteers to these various boards and commissions. Next, I have an announcement that I am very happy about, very pleased to announce. This is something that Jessica and I have been working on since I became village president. I had had experience in other towns with mobile driver's service facilities. Secretary of State offers a mobile service where they'll go to villages and set up for one day and you can renew your license, you can get a real ID, you can do lots of cool stuff right here in town, it's convenient, et cetera. I'm pleased to announce that for the first time ever in Riverside, the Secretary of State's office will host a mobile DMV. This event will be held at Quincy Community Center located at 43 East Quincy Street on June 26 from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The village is partnering with State Senator Mike Porfirio to bring the service to the community. Residents can register through the Parks and Recreation Online Registration System or by contacting Village Clerk Ethan Soul at esoul@riverside-il.us. There is limited capacity and from my experience seeing these in other towns, you need to sign up and sign up early and as they usually fill up all their available time. Representatives from the Secretary of State's office will be present to assist with reviewing driver's licenses or converting driver's licenses or state IDs into real IDs, which will be required in 2025, I believe, for everyone. State IDs are free for residents that are 65 or older. More information, such as a list of acceptable documents and fees, are available on the homepage of the village's website and on our social media. I want to thank village staff, Director Ron Malkiotti, and Clerk Soul for working on coordinating this event. While the event is only four hours, there is a significant coordination with the state that was done to provide this service. Special thanks, of course, to Secretary of State Alexei Giannoulis and State Senator Mike Porfirio and their respective teams for coordinating this important event for Riverside. This is a really great service that we're able to bring right here into town, don't have to drive to Bedford Park or wherever, Lombard or wherever the nearest facility is for that one day. If you get signed up early enough, you will have the opportunity to conduct your motor vehicle business right here. So, thank you. Let's see. Find my place. Upcoming meetings. May 20, Historical Commission at 27 Riverside Road in Room 4. Also, May 20, Parks and Recreation Board at the library. Also, May 20, Board of Fire and Police Commissioners at the Quincy Community Center, 43 East Quincy. Events coming up include Riverside Ride on Saturday morning, the 18th, this coming Saturday, begins at 7:15 at the Quincy Community Center, 43 East Burlington. There is a new route this year, so even if you have joined us in the past, it will be something new. The route will begin and end at the Quincy Community Center and will be escorted by the Riverside Police Department and Recreation Staff. This is a free event and no registration is required. Just show up, be there by 7:15 a.m. on Saturday morning, the 18th. Also upcoming on Memorial Day, May 27, is a Memorial Day program at Guthrie Park at 1:00 p.m. And coming up on June 2, is the Landscape Advisory Commission Native Plant Sale in the green parking lot on East Burlington, across from Riverside Foods, from 1 to 3 p.m. Again, that's June 2. There'll be more advertisement of those events as the day's approach. Also, prior to our next board meeting on June 5, is the opening day of the Farmer's Market. Farmer's Market is located in Centennial Park and will be open from 2:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. The market is every Wednesday from June 5 to October 9. Special thanks to Amy Jaxick and the volunteers of the Farmer's Market Committee, as well as Megan Siska, who coordinates the market through the Parks and Recreation Department. The Farmer's Market has been, seems to grow bigger and bigger every year, better and better every year, so I'm looking forward to this year's market. Again, it's on Wednesdays, 2:30 to 7, beginning June 5 through October 9. And that concludes my report. Manager Francis.
Thank you. I have a couple of items to report on this evening. First, a couple of reminders. No mow May has concluded and village staff has resumed enforcement of maintenance requirements related to tall grass and weeds. So if you have any questions, you can certainly reach out to village staff, but if you get a door hanger, that means that you need to mow your grass. That's our kind and delicate way of advising residents that they are not following village code. Additionally, village offices are closed on Monday, May 27, in observance of Memorial Day. And now for some fun items. Unfortunately, the annual fishing derby has been rescheduled to June 22 at 9:30 a.m. This is due to the high water level of the river. If you are available this day, spots are still open, so please register. There is no fee for the event, but you must register in advance online or at the Parks and Recreation offices. And finally, our summer concert series begins June 14 at Big Ballpark. Join us for Chicago's Own Piano Man, featuring the music of Billy Joel and Elton John, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Our other concerts will be July 3 at Guthrie and August 16 at Big Ballpark. We want to thank this year's sponsors, whom are Starbuds, Burke Engineering, and Flood Brothers. Thank you to our Parks and Rec team for putting these great events together. We are very fortunate to have such a dedicated staff, putting all of our different spring, summer, and early fall events together for the community. That is all I have this evening.
Thank you. This time, we ask for resident comments on non-agenda items. If there are, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board on an item not on the agenda, keeping in mind that we will allow for public comment on all agenda items as well? Does anybody would like to address the board? Yes, sir. Please approach the podium and identify yourself.
All right. First of all, I've never done this before. My name is Joe Sibley. I live over on Scottswood Commons. I had an idea of what I was going to possibly see tonight, and it's a lot different than what I am seeing, so please bear with me as I'm going to be doing this. And if I have to go look at my notes, I'm not 20 years old anymore, so my memory basically just kind of goes down the toilet. I want to do this as orderly as I possibly can. I'm not the most articulate individual underneath the sun, but I hope I can make my point. Been living here for 46 years. This has always been, Riverside has always been kind of an island for me, with chaos, basically, on the other side of 26th, 1st, Ogden, and Harlem. Once I pull into this town, it's just kind of peaceful and quiet, and I've always enjoyed it. The area is just so nice. On the 3rd of May, opened up my door over on Scottswood and I was going to pick up the newspaper and I looked out over at the Commons area and I was a little bit shocked. And I saw this sea of weeds. At that time, the dandelions had basically got to a point where they had flowered and had seeds on them, but it was a blight. I got in the car and I started to drive around. The only place I saw where there weren't these dandelions were on the residences. All the public areas had all of this nonsense to me. I can understand why the areas that are going to be on the public domain, after I spoke to a number of individuals, including the gentleman over here and Dan and Mr. Collins and your office. And I was kind of kicked back and forth between the village hall here and over to Public Spoke to Mike Collins for about a half hour, the very first day that I went over there on May 3 and spoke to him about these dandelions. And he starts talking about a vote that was made about four or five years ago. And I assumed that this basically was on some kind of a referendum, and I've always voted every time underneath the sun ever since I was in the service, and I was in the service for nine years. I found out later that basically this was something that was done by the board and not by the residents. So instead of 9,000 people, and I'm just pulling this number out of my ears, rather than basically seven or eight individuals that are in this room. And I don't know whether you were there four or five years ago to vote on this, but as I was driving around, I just kept on thinking, the public land is just loaded with all this dandelions, and it's ugly. I looked up in Webster's Dictionary and I saw that it's a weed, number one, and it's harmful and it's useless by definition to lawns, grasses, whatever. And it really just doesn't look that nice. And for the last four years, every year since, nothing has been done chemically. These things have basically increased in the amount of numbers that have occurred in the village. And we're not talking about 10 and 15, we're talking millions. And this year, there was a tremendous amount, and next year, there's going to be even probably if only three or four or five percent of those seeds basically take root, there's going to be a tremendous amount in the public lands, not the residences. Now, there are exceptions, I understand that. But the people that are the residents of the Riverside basically either have landscaping people or they themselves are basically taking care of it. Now, I understand there's a few spots here and there that basically are a problem with these individual residences. Anyway, after talking to Dan, I asked him, how do I proceed? I talked to this gentleman over here. I went to Jessica's office, I spoke to Mike Collins, and they said, you have to go to the board and basically just put it before the board. And I says, all right, fine. And I says, I hope that something is going to be done, basically, that's going to be logical. And I'm thinking, why would somebody want to have something that's going to be ugly and is going to not look decent for the village to continue as something which is almost like a disease? Why can't you just take care of this? When I talked to Dan, I asked, what has he been doing? And he says, well, all I can do is what the village basically voted on. And he says, so, I says, so what have you been doing? He says, I've been cutting the grass more frequently. And I said, so you're doing this palliative, hiding this. Now, we're talking about a plant that has invaded these areas to the point where it's basically destroying the grass and the areas throughout the village that are basically public. I was told that the village, there's a number of individuals, and I don't mean any, I don't want to attack anybody by any stretch of the imagination, but there are people who are greens, and I understand this. It's wonderful, I'm happy for you. I'm a dentist and I deal in the health professions. And when you have cause and effect, if something is causing something that is going to be deleterious, that is going to cause a problem, there's a number of ways to possibly take in care of it. You can turn your back on it and just hope that a miracle occurs and it's resolved, or you can do something about it. Now, I can understand the greens just saying, no chemicals. And I scratched my head and I'm thinking, yesterday, or this morning, my wife, when I got up, she just said, the chopper was over Riverside and it dumped another bunch of whatever, something aerosol, liquids, powders or something like that, for quote-unquote "the gypsy moth." Now, they tried to, according to Mike, eliminate this particular problem by spreading all this whatever it was in certain areas of the village. And it was not supposed to attack men, women, human beings, animals. I've been in the health profession for 54 years. There isn't a chemical on this planet that doesn't have side effects, nothing. The water you drink, you have chlorine and fluoride in it, poisons, but it's not to the extent that it's going to cause a problem. Your body basically can fight this off.
Dr. Sibley, your point is well taken. You've noted the relevant factors. Putting chemicals, poison on any land area in the village is not taken lightly by the village board, nor should it ever be. We don't typically discuss or engage during public comments, but what we typically do is that if a trustee, you know, if you resonate with a trustee, they'll bring it to staff's attention or my attention, and we'll revisit the issue. So I very much appreciate you coming out, and you're exactly right, this is what this forum is for, so residents can bring up an issue like this and then the board can mull it over. And if a trustee, again, wants the board to revisit that policy, they'll bring it to my attention or to Manager Francis's attention. So I thank you for coming out, and, you know, if any further action is taken, make sure staff reaches out to you. That's it? That's it. Thank you. Thanks for coming out. Thank you very much for being attentive. Appreciate it. Anyone else wanting to make public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on. Page 5. Consent agenda. Clerk Soul, would you please read the consent agenda?
Approve voucher list of bills, May 16, 2024. Approve Village Board of Trustees Regular Meeting Minutes, May 2, 2024. Review and File Department Reports, Finance, Community Development, Police, Fire, and Public Works, April 2, 2024. Review and File Board and Commission Minutes, Riverside TV Commission Regular Meeting, March 11, 2024. Preservation Commission Regular Meeting, April 11, 2024. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year, beginning January 1, 2023 and ending December 31, 2023, for additional expenditures and revenues, and a resolution authorizing the sale or disposal of personal property owned by the Village of Riverside.
Do any of these items need to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Gallegos, second by Trustee Koss. Clerk Soul, please read the roll.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Koss.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Consent agenda is approved. Department Board and Commission Reports, we have a report regarding the Integrated Lakes Management Report Update, which our Landscape Advisory Commission has been working on. Director TAB, would you like to introduce this item?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like at this time to introduce the Chairperson of the Landscape Advisory Commission, Lisa Lambros, who is going to give a brief update on Swan Pond, some of the treatments that have been going on, and other LAC initiatives that have occurred this year and then moving forward as well. So, Lisa.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving the time to talk a little bit about what's been going on with the LAC. First of all, I would like to thank the board for the budgets that we've had the last two years. We've really been able to do some really interesting things, more education, and I think getting more information out to our residents that are helpful. As Director TAB mentioned, so the ILM report, in 2022, the LAC decided to use $600 of their $1,000 budget towards getting really a baseline evaluation of Swan Pond. We had changed some things in the village as far as how we manage Swan Pond, and it was really important for us to kind of get a better understanding of what was available as far as native plant material. That was our first plant inventory in 2022, and it also allowed us to look at environmental select herbiciding, specifically for Reed Canary Grass, and start again with Prescrie Burns, which Mike Collins does for us. One of the things that came out in the 2023, which, so we put this back in the budget for 2023, and it was really exciting to see within a year of doing a few extra things, what's happened to the Swan Pond. So I'm not going to bore you to death with plant material data. All of you can get this report through staff, but I will tell you, for a plant nerd, we had only 62 native species in Swan Pond in 2022, and in 2023, we had 91. So it was a big change for one year. And I will say this, being a plant nerd, the fact that we have 13 more different types of sedges, which are really, people look at them as little grasses, but they really help with an ecosystem and balancing out an ecosystem, so very exciting. I will say this, the ILM report also came back to us with a suggestion for 2024 that the LAC will be looking at, and that's really doing a volunteer coalition to help with Swan Pond. So a lot of people see the blue irises, the So a lot of people see the blue irises, the blue flag irises, that's a good plant. The yellow flag irises, not so good. They're actually invasive and they can become a monoculture. So one of the things they suggested was actually labeling them so that we can take care of the yellow iris. They're pretty, but they really shouldn't be in Swan Pond. Another thing is distribution of desirable seed heads. That will help us be able to do a natural way of expanding our native plant material down there. And again, with volunteers, helping with any garlic mustard shows up, it's all very good things. So I'd like to thank you for that. We've been very busy already this year. We started April 16th with PAC 24 over in the Presbyterian Church. They asked us if we would do an education for Earth Day. So we put together a brief PowerPoint presentation, because these children are from five years old to fifth grade. But we did a scavenger hunt and really talked about how Riverside was designed, and talked about plants, talked about animals, and talked about ecosystems. So it was, it was very well received, and we're hoping that that will spur into another volunteer operation for, with PAC 24. May 11th, we just had Big Global Day, and we were able to give away native plants, 132 native plants. So we had Shooting Star, we had Cut Leaf Toothwort, and Coriapsis. It was a very successful day. We had U of I with us, too, that gave out lots of plant material and expertise to our residents, so that was great. Just last night, after school, my LAC commissioners were over at Hauser Junior High at the Evergreen Club, and they planted 132, three different species of new native plants in their native gardens out front. So very exciting. And they also got both PAC 24 and Hauser Junior High have gotten our lovely Riverside bird, tree, and flower posters as help and support for our ecosystem. June 1st, we have the Ecology Club. It's going to be planting another 800 pollinating plants and sedges. Last year at this time, they planted 800 milkweeds around Riverside. So Swan Pond, you'll see quite a bit of a swamp milkweed that bloomed last year, and you'll see it again this year. Everything is coming up beautifully. So we're going to be focused in on a triangle at Selworn and Northgate that we had an Eagle Scout last year clear a buckthorn, and there's very little Forbes or small plants in their native plants. And we have a group of resident volunteers that are going to adopt the triangle then to keep it up. So that's really great news. President Pollak reminded us all of the native plant sales, so we're going to have that again with stellar natives on the 2nd, from 1 to 3. And the last thing we have before summer really breaks is June 15th. We have another Eagle Scout that is doing a triangle at Mishaw and Akinside. Our Public Works Department did a great job of clearing buckthorn there, but again, there's very little native material other than the trees that are there. So this will kind of help that ecoculture and ecosystem. And that's it. I know, I don't know if you have any plant questions for me or any other questions, but we have a very dedicated group of commissioners, and it's a lot of fun. And it's been really great, the support that we've gotten from the village. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Lisa, I saw that you were going to be stepping down his chair.
I am.
And I wanted to thank you for the many years of service that you've given us through the commission. You've, you've done so many projects with the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts. I couldn't even create a list of all the things that, all the ways that you've contributed to the village over the years, and I just wanted you to know that I appreciate you and thank you.
Oh, thank you. I'm staying on the commission until 2026. Thank you, President Pollak, for letting me do that. I really do enjoy working with the kids, because it's really, it's amazing. Their little lights, their eyes light up, and they get very excited, and them understanding, you know, if they love birds, right? Understanding why insects and, and having pollinators are so important, to have birds that nest and fledge and become adult birds. So it's, it's really a cool cycle. Thank you very much.
And it's great that Dave is going to be stepping up his chair as well.
Yeah. He was my great vice chair. My, my, my company and my travel and my management is just getting too much, so, but I can make a meeting, but I don't have to do an agenda anymore.
Any other questions or comments from trustees? Thank you, Lisa, both for your service and continuing service, but especially for what you've done, what the Landscape Advisory Commission, working with our village staff, has done throughout the village, but especially Swan Pond. I think Swan Pond is one of the great success stories of this village over the last 10 years.
I do, too. I do, too. And I think it's important to look at that and to look at, you know, don't just always look at the past, but look at the future and what we can do. It's a disturbed site. It's always going to be a flood zone. It's always, it's never going to be perfect. That's, that's not possible. But what is possible is to have a much better ecosystem there, and I think we're well on the way of doing that.
And, and that ecosystem includes a lot of people, too.
Yes, yes.
You walk over there on a Saturday or Sunday morning. And, yeah, it's, it is amazing. So, yeah, that, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Pending business. Parking lot number eight, business space utilization update. Director Zavala.
Good evening, President Pollak and Board of Trustees. I'm here to just give a brief update on the business parking trial in lot number eight. This hasn't been discussed since last year of May of 2023, so I included all the details in the agenda history sheet for your review. And here's the, the map so we could go over, let's see. So we are talking about the spaces right here. These are the business parking spaces allotted to any businesses on Quincy Street that have the permit, and these are the spaces allotted to First American Bank. And in this chart, we could show, we track the usage for April and May, and we could see there are 17 spots altogether, and the 12 unassigned spaces that anyone could use, that's the daily usage. There are five spots, five spaces utilized on April 19th out of the 12. And then for First American Bank, you could see they haven't utilized it at all. Only one, one day. And so this is right here, the amount of space that's still available for business parking. What it shows is most likely the businesses, employees are parking on the street and not utilizing the parking lot. So the next step will to be to send a small survey out to the surrounding businesses on Quincy Street to further gauge the utilization and gather more data. And then we plan to deliver the results of the survey before the reconstruction project begins in lot eight. And then at this time, at a future date, after all the data is presented, the board could then decide if changes are needed to the parking designation. But this, this update tonight just to show the utilization at this point.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or any information that you would like more monitoring or tracking?
Manager Francis, anything to add?
No, if the board elects to not make any additional changes, whether it's increase the allocation of the parking spots, or to remain status quo, we, if it's status quo or changing anything, we need to do a code modification. So that'll need to be a discussion, as Director Zavala stated. She's going to collect additional data and do the survey, and then bring those deliverables back to the board for discussion and then final direction.
So this is, no action is necessary from the board. This is an update, and I, this is really good information, and thank you, Directors of all, and I understand our community service officers helped out with this as well, in terms of counting cars.
Yes, and he continues to monitor as well.
Good. So we will continue to monitor it. You can see that the business spaces are underutilized. Is that because they don't know about it, or because they don't need it, or whatever? But the survey will help bring that information out as well, and the village board will be able to make an informed decision in the future. So if there's no other questions or comments from the trustees, we'll move on to the next item.
Thank you.
Thank you. New business. An ordinance amending Title III, Title IV, and Title VII. Village Code of the Village of Riverside, Illinois, relating to construction practices as built. Survey requirements, building site regulations, radon control, and stormwater regulation. Assistant Village Manager Monroe.
Well, thank you, and good evening. We are here tonight to walk through, and I can certainly provide additional detail, but I'll give just a very brief overview for the purpose and, and the intent of these code changes. So every day, we are inspecting our buildings, our properties for safety and code compliance with our building codes, and as we do those things, we find that there are potentially some changes in the code language that we have. These are local ordinances and not the provisions within our adopted international building codes, our ICC codes. And so as we go through them, I'll just briefly provide a rationale for why we're, we're proposing these changes. There's three sections of the code where they would apply. One being in Title III, business regulations, that's pertaining to the contractor discipline that's recommended. Currently, our code provisions spell out what to do if contractors are not getting a permit for the work that they're doing. This would modify that code slightly and allow us to provide a punitive measure for other types of violations. People abandoning a job site, leaving our residents without a contractor, leaving a job site open and dangerous for members of the community, or children, or animals, or whoever to wander in and, and get hurt. You know, failing to call for inspections after they've performed a job and, and leaving that work undone. So that provision also, to this change of Title III, also allows for an appeal process. So if we were to create a, you know, revocation of their contractor license, where they wouldn't be able to do work in, in town for a couple of years, it does provide a, a measure for them to go through our adjudication process and, and appeal that. The next thing that we're proposing is a, excuse me, is the provisions of the code that we're trying to have them provide, so as-built plans, it's just an adjustment to the village being allowed to or, or guiding us in when we request as-built plans. Right now, it specifies only that we need them for new construction and additions. This opens the door for other types of projects where we would commonly ask for that or, or need to for grading, paving of projects, or other types of larger scale projects. We spell out exactly for staff when it would be helpful to have. We're, we are enhancing our tree protection. So trees in town, currently, the code is calling out the use of a chain link fence, 72 inches high with big posts, and often people find this burdensome to do. We sometimes get questions from our public work staff about the, why our public right-of-way trees aren't fenced appropriately, and we want to make sure that they're really, and residents, too, for that matter, they're concerned, and people love our trees, and so we want to make sure it's very easy to protect them in the right of way, and so we're opening up the code to allow for additional methods of fencing and have not only Public Works, but also Building Department allowed to approve tree fencing. And the last two items, one of them being electrical circuit requirements for radon mitigation systems. This is in Chapter Four as well, or Section Four. 610 will create a section on radon control. For the most part, it observes the state code requirements for radon, but it adds a provision that we'd like to create a dedicated circuit to make sure those radon mitigation systems continue to function. And finally, our stormwater drainage and sump pump location recommendations. This is for Title VII. We do have some provisions. It gives general guidance about not creating a nuisance on other people's property. This is probably every single week, most days, we have concerns from residents about water management and stormwater management in town. And so when we run into an issue where people are either unsure of where they can drain, where to install sump pump, the sump pump discharging into the right-of-way, our sidewalk, creating sheeting in cold weather, this goes over the sidewalk and creates slip hazards, these changes are providing a better guidance for where exactly we should be minimally requiring people, so at least five feet from a property line, kind of your side yard, 10 feet from the right-of-way, the public right-of-way area, and then ultimately with guidance from the, the Building Department about appropriate location. So we know lots are tight, and there's really different challenges in community, but we're hoping that this flexibility also provides more guidance. And so if you have any questions about this, we also have our Building Inspector, Rob Conches, here, and can answer any questions.
Trustees, any questions? I had one clarification. Could you clarify a little bit the as-built survey requirements? Is that?
Yes.
Record drawings for actual buildings, or is that grading, or what exactly is that?
Yeah, the, it is the, the buildings that will need to define the final constructed conditions, so our layout, the dimensions, any structural components, utilities, and the grading terrain. So that's for, like I said, the new construction garages. Accessory structures, too, potentially, you could ask for it. It's not a requirement, so we don't have to ask in every circumstance, someone puts in a, a small shed or something like that. We would not have to request an as-built, but it does give guidance as to what the provisions and what would need to be in those plans for us to verify that everything was built the correct manner.
Good. Thank you. Trustee Marshazga.
I don't have questions about the substantive changes, per se, but I do have questions about what the communication plan is for existing permits that have been requested, and then for new permits going forward.
Yeah, so anything that is, is in progress would, would be under, just like we would for any adopted codes, the, the standing codes where the permit was approved would be what we would use and abide by. And then we would adopt these going forward. So something coming up tomorrow, if you wanted to apply, we would convey that these things would be, would be required. We're going to, I know, communicate about sump pumps and getting a permit for those, even if they're a temporary solution. I know they're really commonly used in town. People kind of plop them where they are, but there's electrical components. There could be conflicts with either grounding electricity or, or other kinds of drainage concerns, and so we want to try to work with people on that. We have a regular communication with our contractors as well, so things like the, for example, the contractor, you know, discipline or strike system that we've applied, we have a policy for when and for what reasons we would write someone a letter or cite them for violation. So those things will be communicated to our contractors, and then we'll, we'll communicate with residents. If you have any other feedback or specific suggestions about how you'd like to see some of this communicated, we certainly can, can do that. We'll remind people about the, the tree fencing as we go. We try not to let projects, you know, progress or continue or even start before we have the tree fencing in place. That's a change from the past year.
I've just had residents in the past mention that I've just had residents in the past mention that their contractor had been used to doing business in the village for X number of years, and then all of a sudden, midstream, you know, they're surprised by a change in the code. So I just want to make sure that we are proactive about the communication piece, that's all.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I would only add that the changes here are pretty typical amongst all the communities that we represent. So to the extent we tell a contractor about it, I doubt that they'll be terribly surprised, but at least these changes.
Trustee Evans.
Could you tell me what a tree protection would look like? I know that you talked about fencing. So where would we want to put fencing?
Yeah, so the fencing is typically surrounding the, the tree's drip line, right? So the extent of the farthest sort of branches that would come down. We want fencing to generally protect all of that area underneath it. The roots system is also what we're protecting by not allowing someone to stack materials. So we've had, for example, people drop permeable pavers or, or just paving stones on the parkway, and in doing so, they set it, set it on the tree roots underneath. And so by fencing, either with the, like I said, the either chain-link fence, if it's a big enough area, generally the ones in the right-of-way will end up being a brightly colored snow fencing. It's ugly, but it certainly catches attention, and it, by putting it at that drip line, you also mitigate trucks that are going to back into those areas and potentially put equipment that damages or hauling big boards and things like that, and hitting tree branches. We've had that experience, and have been trying to address that as, as it comes along.
So it's more like temporary fencing?
It's temporary fencing. So, and as soon as we, and as soon as it's done, then we're, we allow people to, to take that down as, as soon as we're pretty sure that the work isn't going to disrupt anything.
Anything else, trustees? I did want to take this opportunity, since this is his first time in a board meeting. Rob, could you come up and introduce yourself? Rob Conches is our Building Inspector. He started early this year, correct?
Yes, November 5th, yes.
Late last year.
Yes.
And he's been doing a tremendous job. It's really nice to have a full-time Building Inspector.
I just want to say thank you very much. It's been a joy, the short term so far, and looking forward for the future. It's, it's a great group from all departments that I've met, and it's a great team, and I'm looking forward to working.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else from trustees on this? I think I need a motion to approve the ordinance.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Motion by trustee Evans, second by trustee Koss. Any discussion on the motion? Any public comments on the motion or on the agenda item? If not, clerk Sol.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Koss.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
The ordinance is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee reports. Are there any trustee reports this evening? Trustee Mateo.
This past Saturday, the village, for the first time, officially participated in Global Big Day. So Global Big Day is sponsored by the National Audubon Society and the Cornell Laboratory of Ornithology worldwide to encourage people to go out on the second Saturday of May and just see and report what they're seeing in terms of migrating birds. So, we celebrated that this year. We had a bird group, a bird walk, and had about 30 people with us, which is the biggest group we've ever had before. Heard a lot, didn't see a lot. It's kind of tough with all those leaves out there, but it was still fun. It's good turnout. And then we had organizations set up at the Water Tower. LAC was there, again, giving out some native plants. Brookfield Zoo Chicago was there. They had kids surrounding them for like two hours, and Olmstead Society was there. So overall, it was a great inauguration to Riverside's Big Day, and if we do it again, pencil in May 10th, 2025. Big thanks to Assistant Village Manager Monroe for doing a lot of organizing, a lot of designing, and a lot of advertising, and I thank trustee Evans as well for helping on the marketing. So, thank you.
We got our free native plants, and as I left for the meeting tonight, my wife was in the garden digging, getting ready to plant them. It's a good event. Thank you. Any other trustee reports? Seeing none, we do have need for an executive session this evening to discuss probable imminent or pending litigation, and to discuss the minutes and recordings of minutes lawfully closed under this act, whether for purposes of approval by the body of the minutes or semi-annual review. The Board will not reconvene, and no final action will take place. I would ask for a motion and second to adjourn to executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Koss, second by trustee Mateo. Clerk Sol.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Koss.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.